Good evening and welcome to the September 23 Maplewood City Council Manager Workshop. We have a pretty full agenda and we've got a full house tonight, almost a full house. So, welcome everyone, thank you for coming and participating in our workshop tonight. City Manager Coleman, would you do our roll call, please?
Certainly.
Can we ask them to turn the volume up with a few people?
Is it possible to turn up the volume on our microphones a little bit?
Yes. I can't hear very well. I don't have a hearing aid and don't need one. Still can't hear yet.
We just asked the back room if they would turn it up.
Careful what you wish for.
They're working on it back there.
They're going to see if they can raise the volume. So with that, I'll start with the roll call. So, Councilmember Neblet here, Councilmember Smith here, Councilmember Knutson, Mayor Abrams here, and let's note that Councilmember Juneman is not here this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Neblet, motion to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Is your light on, Councilmember Smith?
No, it was about the volume.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hearing, no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no unfinished business tonight, we have two items of new business. One is a presentation from Ramsey County Commissioner Victoria Reinhardt, and the second presentation is concerning our webpage, our city webpage. So with that, Mr. Thompson, would you like to queue up our Commissioner report tonight?
Yeah, thank you Mayor and Council, and good evening. So just a brief introduction, Commissioner Reinhardt has just requested some time for the council in a workshop format, just to provide an update regarding maybe other things, but also focusing on the ponds at Battle Creek, because we know that that's been getting some attention from the neighborhoods down in South Maplewood. So we just wanted to invite the Commissioner here to give you an update on that and answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, welcome Commissioner Reinhardt.
Thank you, and thank you so much for making time on your workshop agenda and on your city council agenda for me to give an update. The workshop, I'm going to concentrate on the ponds at Battle Creek and also the St. Paul Police Department gun range, because it's all on the same parcel. And I'm so glad to see, I know I'm supposed to be talking to you, but I'm still glad to see all of you. Okay, now I'll do, I'll do this right. To say that this, our budget process, first of all, I should tell you a little bit about our budget process. We do a two-year budget, which is unique to Ramsey County. We also, and it's basically to try to get into the same cycle as the state, because we are the implementation arm of the state, and that makes sense to do that. The first year of our budget process, we do adopt a two-year budget and the levy for the next year, but it is then in the second year of our budget process, we concentrate more on the outcomes and how the money is being spent. But we still make tweaks to the budget, because we have to approve the budget then again in December of 2020, just like we're going to approve the 2020 budget in December of 19. And so I want to, that's an important thing to note, because of the fact that we are not adopting that, the 2021 budget still needs to be voted on in December of 2020. So, and that's significant, of course, because the date that the county manager has put into his proposed budget for closure of the ponds is January 1st, 2021. And I have to tell you, and I'm going to be really blunt and honest here, I worked hard to get that changed, so that it was in 2021 instead of 2020, because that was absolutely outrageous, and I think actually what happened here is pretty outrageous all by itself. And I think we have a, we are a county that really prides itself in being open and transparent and providing data, and we do workshops, just like you do, to talk through things, to get the data on the decisions that we are making. That did not happen with this. And that is my primary concern, is, you know, once everybody gets the data and is looking at things, there could be all kinds of different machinations that could come out of this. But we don't even have the data to back anything up. It's just it was there, and the commissioners have stated that they do want it to close, but also talked to me about the fact that some of them anyhow are very concerned about the lack of process. So I'm kind of talking off the cuff here, because I just want to really lay this out for you. One of the things that one Commissioner brought up to me was, well, you know, this is the way we do things, we just, you know, we have discussions, we can have the public comment as we're going forward, but we didn't do this on Boys Totem Town, totally different issue. And then she said, but, and we didn't do this on Vadness Sports Dome. And I backed her up and I said, oh, yes, we did. We had multiple workshops as a board, so that we got all of the data that we needed. We went out to the community and had community meetings, at least three, and then we had everybody come in and talk about what they wanted to see happen here. And we came to a resolution. There's no reason this shouldn't have had the same. But we are where we are. So what, so I originally, well, I still do, I have two addendum, and I think most of the people in the audience have seen it. I do have, I only have half a dozen copies here, and so you all have one? Okay. If you want to, like, I don't know how you can pass it around, you can do that. Just know that, it's just okay, if you haven't, if you've already seen it, then please pass it on to the next person, and there's several copies there, so. I should have thought to make more copies, but I, I didn't. Anyhow, so I'm first of all going to read, I'm going to read what I have written here, because I think it actually kind of lays it out pretty clearly. And this is to the, and this is the process that we go through, by the way. Commissioner can bring forward budget addenda, and it's actually not going to be heard until November. And so usually we, we come up with what we need, and we have to talk about, in our budget addenda, we have to say, okay, this is what it's going to cost, this is what we're not going to do in order to get that done, if that's the case. In this case, there really isn't, it's negligible, the impact on the budget in 2021 and in 2020. And so I wasn't sure how to go forward with this. So I came up with what I think guarantees a public process, and we have time to do things. So, I simply am going to read this, I normally wouldn't do that, but I think it's the best way to, to go forward. "To achieve our vision for a Ramsey County 21st Century Park System, the Ramsey County Board of Commissioners will need to make important decisions on park system changes that will best serve all Ramsey County residents equitably. The purpose of the addenda to the 2020-2021 budget are to, Addendum 1 is to remove the closure of the ponds at Battle Creek, driving range and golf course from the 2021 budget. And Addendum 2, prepare and implement a plan for board workshops and engaging the community to learn about their needs and wants from the 21st Century Ramsey County Park System. Data from staff and community input will help inform the Ramsey County Board of Commissioners as we make important decisions regarding changes to facilities and programming." So, Addendum 1, I can tell you, unless something major changes, this will fail. So I'm, again, being honest here. But this one, but I do feel, as I read through this, and especially when I get to the with or without passage, it does give us room to, to at least bring a lot of attention to this. I can also tell you that I have been, the other process that we go through, and I'm sure it's the same here, is you have to have a second on something, in order to get it discussed and voted upon. I have a second for both of these. So this will be discussed, or just simply voted up or down, but it will be voted on by all commissioners. So, removal of the closure date of January 1st, 2021, of the ponds at Battle Creek, that's the purpose of it. "The budget impacts as contained in the 2020-21 proposed budget would be zero in 2020, and a revenue increase of an estimated $5,000 in 2021." Because there's no, that's it, it's revenue that's going to be lost. "The staffing impact in 2021 could delay reallocation of the staff to other park system efforts by up to one year, therefore there's no budget impact in 2021 either." And by the way, the reallocation of staff, I mean, that is something that would take place, when I say up to a year, it probably wouldn't be nearly that long, because we don't have a plan in place for the 21st century vision. There is also a cost associated with maintenance on a closed facility, and I've not attempted to calculate that expenditure for 2021, primarily because it wasn't in the budget anyway. So I could see no reason to try to calculate it and then take it back out, because it wasn't in the budget. This is the part that I think, that I worked very, very hard on. "With or without passage of this addendum, the impact of the closure is for the 2021 budget, which will be voted on in December of 2020. Exploring options for this site, including the sale of the ponds at Battle Creek as is, or other site option identified by the zoning authority, the City of Maplewood will continue." I obviously wanted to make a couple of points here. One is that the City of Maplewood is the zoning authority, and you will have, you always have had, a very open, public, robust process when you're making decisions. So I know that you would do that if this actually goes through. But we do have all of 2020, and then they will have to vote again for the closure in 2021. If, and that, it may still go through, but at least hopefully we'll have a public process. Addendum number 2, and this is where I tried to build in that public process that lacks, and that I think is really fundamental to the way we are supposed to do business. "The Ramsey County Board of Commissioners has built an open, transparent, and thoughtful process to make transformational change throughout our county. A pillar of that process is community engagement. Wherever and whenever we can build partnerships, better outcomes follow. I believe the Ramsey County Board of Commissioners wants to hear from our constituents and needs to engage the community on the 21st Century Parks, Ramsey County Park System. Board workshops with data from staff and input from our community members will assist us in making informed decisions about resource allocation for staff and facilities that will best meet community needs and wants in an equitable manner. Although community engagement and workshops are incorporated into the county budget, I have included a one-time expenditure of up to $5,000 for incidentals associated with gathering community input." And you will see that is shown then in 2020. And the reason, quite simply, that I did that, because you wouldn't think, well, why would you have to put this into a budget addenda? Because it's common sense. I wanted to make sure that when this is voted on, that it says, we are going to do this in 2020, period. And yes, the ponds is not called out here, but the reality is, it should never have been called out in the first place. If we're talking about a 21st Century Ramsey County Park System, all the golf courses, all the programming, all the ice arenas, everything is part of that vision. So to pull one out prematurely makes no sense to me. So that's why I made sure that it was about the entire system, because when you make a decision in isolation, and without any data to back it up, other than the fact that it doesn't make as much money as the other courses, you need to have more than that. And I will also tell you that that was brought up to me too, well, you know, it's not making really any money, and we did, we forgave a debt of over $5 million on building this. At first, we thought it was going to be an enterprise fund and it would pay for itself. That didn't happen. We had the recession, we had all kinds of things, and it just didn't happen. But that's no different than the other courses, we put money into those as well, and the debt service is not counted against the revenue. And so, but the other thing that I pointed out was, and we have done no marketing. We have changed, we are changing the way we are going to have our fees set at the golf courses, so that there's some peak times and different things throughout our system, but this one was never considered for that, because it was simply proposed to be closed. You can tell I'm a little emotional about this, but it was pointed out to me, actually by the former city manager here, that when we did this, it was leadership styles, and this was last Tuesday, and he said, he looked around the table of the commissioners and he said, what percentage of your decisions are emotional? And the Commissioner said, well, 80, 90, 95. Now I was pretty upset at that point, and I said, well, from where I'm at right now, it's 100%. And he said, Victoria, you are absolutely right. And the reality is, every decision we make is an emotional one. What we base it on is the data and the input that we receive from others, and the homework that we do. I want to do my homework, I've done it on every other issue before us, I want to do my homework here, and I want to make sure that my constituents are heard, so that, you know, even, I don't know about you, but even if you don't vote the way somebody wants you to vote, if you have heard them, there is value in that, and it helps you to make the best decisions, because there are often times where compromise needs to happen. Okay, that's great, but if you don't have that discussion, you can't have compromise either. So what I have offered to my county board, through the county manager, and again, this will go through the normal process, it will be voted on, both of these separately, and I did want to separate them out, because I wanted to make sure that that public process happens. And I don't know what will happen with the second one, and who knows, maybe there could be some persuasion on the first one. Because what happened ultimately, because I thought that I had the votes, to have it pulled out, and I made it about, the argument about process, we need to really do our homework and look into this. Others on the board made it about the closing of a golf course. And that, to me, is, it is an important issue, and I support keeping the ponds open, make no mistake about that. But the fact that my constituents didn't have their voice heard, I'm going to stand up and I'm going to scream it from the rooftops. That's all there is to it. Now I would like to, before, and I'm sure you have a lot of questions for me, but before I do that, I also want to bring up an issue that I have been working on since day one of being a county commissioner, is the noise from the long guns at the St. Paul Police Department, and trying to deal with that noise. We have had so many meetings, and yes, I have, I called John specifically and said, get here, because I have had, I mean, we have tried everything. And they have a lease that was signed in 1974, it must have been. It's a 99-year lease. And it's, there are so many holes in this thing, it's pretty scary, actually. And I just said, you know, we've got to look at this, we've got to figure out what this all means. And, but a 99-year lease, at a buck a year, I think, is what it is, and they can do virtually anything they want there, doesn't seem to make sense to me. And finally, I got the attention of some folks, including the county manager, and the Chair of our county board, and the county attorney's office. I have met personally with the Deputy Mayor of St. Paul, and really tried to work through things that were reasonable, compromising, trying to figure out, how can we get this done? And finally, I was fed up, and I said, all right, you need to look at this, have the county attorney look at it, to see what is really there. It is a pistol range. And by the way, the City of Maplewood, in the earliest versions of the agreement, the City of Maplewood specifically stated that you need to deal with the concerns of the neighbors from noise. That didn't carry forward to the next agreements that they had. So I'm not sure when it actually started, but I know that, I think it was probably in the 1960s or 1950s, but the one that we're working under right now is from 1973 or '04. So, what has happened is, I kicked it up a notch and said, I want the county attorney and others to go in and talk to the Deputy Mayor and say, this is it. We are going to deal with this. And that means we will take any action that we can take legally to get the noise from the long guns stopped. Now I don't know what that may look like. I would like to see it closed, I don't know that that's what will happen. But at the very least, suppression equipment, and I've worked on this and did a lot of, actually Darren, my assistant, did a lot of research, we issued a report that went to the county manager, and we sent it to the City of St. Paul as well, that talks about the need for suppressors on long guns. It's for the officers and their hearing, and also, apparently, when you add a suppressor to a gun, and you use it not only for, for practice, but you use it in the field, it's actually more accurate. I guess it has something to do with the weight. I, I'm not a gun person, so I really don't know. But I do know that there are other sheriff's departments, police departments, the armed services, they use suppressors on these guns. And so that may be what comes out of this. But I will tell you, and, and I did make sure that the Deputy Mayor knew that I was going to be talking about this tonight. It will be addressed, period. Again, I'm Irish and German, and I'm, I'm all in on this, on both of these, because they, they, they really, I mean, they're on the same property. I mean, I cannot imagine being a golfer out there and having those guns go off. I mean, it can't be good for your game, but the bottom line is, you know, there are ways to deal with this. And for the longest time, I was told and believed that they had to have outdoor range certification, and that's simply not the case. They have a new firing range, state-of-the-art in St. Paul. There is really no reason that they need to be there, other than the fact that they can be. I know I'm being harsh on this, and I know that this is probably going to get back to them, and I, that's fine, because we have put up with it long enough, the neighbors deserve better, the golfers deserve better, and, you know, if it was pistols or not the long guns, that would be a whole different ballgame, because that's where the noise comes from, and it is jarring. I will tell, I will end with this, I went out there several mayors ago, because again, this has been going on for a long, long time. And we went up into the neighborhood, and there was a city council member that was there, and he's no longer on the city council, but they said, you know, we're going to shoot some guns. But it wasn't like the barrage that you actually listen to when you're, when you're, when you live there, but they went to shoot some guns, and, so, but we didn't know exactly when it was going to happen, we had to get up into the neighborhood, so we're up there. And they started shooting the guns, and literally this guy just about flattened out on the ground. I mean, it was absolutely jarring, and people shouldn't have to deal with that. I get public safety, and the fact that we need to have our officers trained, and they need to train on these, these guns as well, because that's part of law enforcement. There's nothing that says that they shouldn't do that. And it's not about public safety, I would never try to put public safety in jeopardy in any way, shape, or form. But there are ways to do this and use those guns, that is not going to cause such chaos in the neighborhood. Okay, I'm done.
Commissioner Reinhardt, I want to thank you for your passion and for your advocacy for our community, these are very important issues. I can tell you that I have received numerous phone calls and emails from residents about the ponds, and it is absolutely critical that we have a process. Now I will say that I was at a different meeting this afternoon, I was at a meeting with the Rice-Larpenter Alliance, that is a coalition of St. Paul, Roseville, Maplewood, and Ramsey County, and there were two county commissioners there. And I spoke with both of them, and they told me something interesting, they told me that they hadn't heard from any Maplewood residents, that the only...
I agree.
They told me that the only ones that they had been hearing from were from Washington County, and since they weren't constituents, that they weren't really, you know, that concerned. And so my response to them was, that we were having, I pulled them out of this meeting to talk to them and indicate to them that we were having this meeting tonight, and that you were going to be talking about this very issue. And I told them that I would be telling everyone who comes here tonight, please, go on the county website, look up the county commissioners' names and numbers, and send emails, and let them know that you are residents of Maplewood, and that this process, this lack of process is shocking, it is not acceptable, it's not how we do things here in Maplewood. We need a process, we need our voices to be heard, and I warned them that Maplewood is pretty active, and I expect that you all will please communicate with them, because this is very troubling, that ahead of your parks' vision, our lovely golf course is not even going to be considered as part of that, that they would just dismiss it without really saying anything to anyone, and they didn't, you know, it's, it's shocking to me that they didn't believe that, that we would pay attention to this. And so I want to thank you for your passion, and I've got other lights on here, so thank you for that. And please, my message, call them, email them, and tell them that there needs to be a process, that this is just not acceptable, that if Ramsey County wants to be considered to be transparent and fair and clear about what they're doing, then we need a process. We have, I haven't seen any numbers, and I'm the mayor of the city, I haven't seen what they're, you know, any rationale that would support this type of action, and that's particularly disturbing to me. So, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you Mayor, well said, well said. You know, we all, we all up here represent the city as a whole, we all serve at large to the city, but as a resident of South Maplewood, I sometimes feel a little compelled to, to be that voice for South Maplewood. I'm a former resident of North Maplewood as well, so I, you know, I'm sort of bicoastal, I guess. But, first of all, Commissioner, thank you so much for being such an advocate for us, and for doing the best you can to keep us up to date with the best information possible. I know it's hard when you don't have the information, but I know you and I spent a good hour on the phone, and, and I really do appreciate it. Couple of quick questions for you, has there been engagement on the master, the parks' master plan as a whole? Has there been community engagement in that process?
No, because the, the 21st Century Parks' vision is something that was just introduced in this budget. in this budget. Now, we have had, and the reason I hesitated when I said no, is because we've had a golf course study, we've had an ice arena study, we've had other studies that were parts of it, but it's, we have not had it come together in, as a whole.
Is there a plan for that?
And that's what we need to do. Pardon me?
Outside of your addendum, is there a plan for engagement into the...
Actually, the addendum, the 21st century parks' vision, that addendum, and asking for that public engagement, at least to begin. I don't expect that we're going to get the full vision done in one year.
Sure.
But that we will have a framework for it, at least, but we don't have that right now. We have pieces, but we haven't, it hasn't been knitted together, and that's one of the biggest problems that we have. And that's why it was put in here as a major initiative.
So, I like the way you say, "doing your homework," because I think we all feel the same way up here of, you know, as we make decisions, you have to do your homework. But one of the things I learned doing homework, especially my math homework, is you have to show your math in that process, right? And I think where we're all frustrated, including you, Commissioner, is the county's not showing their math. And, you know, I am, I am a bit mystified as to even why there's such a push to close the course. I'm wondering if you have any insights into, I mean, what's the motivation? This is, clearly, some folks are, all of us are upset about it, and I guess I just don't even understand the motivation.
Well, first of all, I don't want to put words in other people's mouths. I do know that each commissioner has talked to me about what they believe and what their concern is, and how they want to make sure to move forward with this. And it varies, it really does. The ponds went into, became a reality on a four-to-three vote, because I was pushing then, as I'm pushing now, to make it happen. And so, and there's a couple that were there at that time, so they knew about the discussion. The chair of our board was the fourth vote, and he is not supporting, I mean, he's not supporting keeping it open. And part of that was because of the enterprise fund and stuff. So, there are different things, you know, wanting to diversify. And that's really what this, the bottom line here is wanting diversification of what do we offer to, as parks, as a system? And we haven't really addressed that yet. And that's what we need to do the homework on. We need to make sure that we are taking everything into consideration. And no matter what we do, I mean, when we make changes to anything, especially in parks and recreation, or libraries, I mean, they're, they are controversial, because people don't necessar, we, even if, even if this change is positive, we still have a visceral reaction to it and are afraid of change. But when you have information to back up, what is it that is going on here? You know, it helps you to understand where someone's coming from. And I guess that's coming full circle in your question. If we had had that discussion as a board, I could answer your question, because it would have been a public comment. But, the other thing is, the only numbers that we have been shown is about the dollars and the income. And, but we're not, I mean, two things on that. One, we're not in the business of making money. We want, it's really great if we can break even. But we do a lot of things, especially in this area, that are not mandated, but we do them because we think that they are good things to do, and there's a cost associated with this. Golf courses and ice arenas, well, golf courses especially, if you don't include debt service, will generally make some money that goes back into the parks' department, and oftentimes into golf courses. In fact, in this county manager's budget, we have about $7 million that's going into Goodrich and into Manitow Ridge. So, it's, you know, you've got two sides of this thing in trying to figure out, well, why this one? But I think the more important question, because they did do, they gave us numbers on the revenue, but that's not the story here. The story is the First T program. I didn't know it existed. Clearly, I don't think, I know that the county manager, none of us really knew it existed. And it doesn't take very much, I mean, I know that this program is really robust at this, at the ponds. But I also Googled it, and found out that the whole reason behind First T is to bring in young players of diverse backgrounds. And from what I understand, that's exactly what this does. So, the other numbers that I really think that we need are, who is going to, all of our golf courses, who is using, who are, who within our community, or outside of our community, are using these facilities, including this one? So, we need to, and we need to know, okay, you know, how about, what's going to, how is it going to make a difference in our overall system when we do marketing? Because that is part of what the golf course study said. It said, "Don't close any golf courses." It did say that this one should be, to make it really a better golf course, it should be an 18-hole golf course, but I don't see how you can do that. But because it said, "It's a challenging course, which is generally for more avid golfers," but it's a nine-hole course, which they don't do. And, but they, but they said, you know, "We don't think you should close it, but you should market it. You should market all your courses, and you should change the fee structures." And so, that's the other part of this. It's not just, "How much money does it make?" If you haven't done any marketing, it's kind of hard to say that it's failed, but, but also, who's using it? What do they want? What do people need within our community? And then finally, I guess I'll just say, the other part of it is, this is an 88-acre site, and 34 of those acres are developable. The rest are all wetlands, 54 acres are wetlands. They will be protected. You know that, I know that. But I also care about not just the protection, because clearly, they are protected now. I mean, there's golf, but it, they are, they are protected. But I also want to make sure that there's public access, because it's beautiful out there. And then, along with that, I don't want people to feel like they're being shot at, so...
That's a plus. Mayor, one more.
One more question, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, on that, on the gun range, thank you also for your advocacy there. So, where I live in South Maplewood, I live near Hywood and McKnight, so I don't live very close to the gun range at all. I'm really on the sort of southwest side of South Maplewood. But if the weather's right, I still hear the range. And so, I know how difficult it is for neighbors close by. And, you know, if you're out there with a .38 pistol, that's one thing, which is also annoying. But with what's going on out there right now, it really is unacceptable. And so, I really appreciate your dogged determination and to work on this. One of the things I learned very quickly upon joining the city council here is, "Don't mess with Commissioner Reinhardt." And so, I'm really glad we're on the same side on both of these issues. But it's, it is something we need, we need to address. It's been too long. One thing I will offer, I hear, so it's a dollar-a-year lease, I would be happy to personally double the rent to the county, if that would help move negotiations at all. Out of my pocket.
I think we have a lot of people that would be willing to do that.
We could pass a hat in the room.
And I, and I do want to stress again, you know, if this was a matter of public safety, and they had, they had to be there, that would be different. But they do not need to be there for their certification, or to get the practice in that they need.
Thank you for making that clear. A couple of questions. The two addendums, one and two, when will this be presented to the county board?
This will be done, and I don't remember the date exactly, but it's in November, right at the, as we are about to adopt our budget.
Okay. So, that gives all of us in the room an opportunity to make those phone calls, send those emails, and I am very serious about that. And council, I am going to suggest that as a council, that we participate in this, I've already been speaking to county commissioners, but that we formalize a letter to each one of the county commissioners, that we are in support of addendum one and addendum two, and that each one of the council members sign it. I see a lot of heads shaking, and so...
I appreciate that, very much.
That will be forthcoming from us. And you said that everyone was aware of these two addendums?
Yes. It went to them, it went to Ryan, I copied it to all of the commissioners, and I gave it a day before I then sent it out to an email list, and anybody I could think of that wanted to see it.
Okay.
So, they are aware of them, and were aware of them before I actually sent it to them, even.
Wonderful. So, we all have our deadlines. We'll get ours out in the next week here.
And I will, by the way, Madam Mayor, I will point out, because I know that there's one commissioner that has said that, that they're all from, actually, two, that have said they're all from Washington County. So, I think it's going to be interesting when you make sure that you start right off with, "I am a resident of Maplewood."
Yes.
Because clearly, they're getting the same emails that I'm getting, and yes, there are some from outside of Ramsey County.
But they're still patrons of the golf course.
They are. And, and I've also pointed that out. I said, "You know, we have this issue." You know what? We have boundaries. We do. You know, live with it. But when we talk about golf courses, libraries, any amenity where you have people coming in and going out, and people, our folks going out to, to go to the choices that they make, that's just part of what we do. I mean, even in the library system, we have the MELSA, because it's metro. We want to make sure that people understand that it is one system, and that we care about it. So, the whole argument about the boundaries, to me makes, it doesn't make any sense to me, because we have to deal with that all the way, all the time.
Nor do me, because libraries, golf courses, those are parks, all of those are important amenities to the quality of life here for residents, but it also is an attraction to bring other people into our community.
Very true.
We've got some other comments. Councilmember Neblet.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Reinhardt, thank you for standing up for us. I was just going to agree with something that the mayor said twice. I too talked to one of our other commissioners, who said that, basically, there were about 18 people that came to a meeting, and that was it. So, obviously, this wasn't something that people cared about. So, if I can say it again for the third time, I am a Maplewood resident, and I care. Or, I'm not a Maplewood resident, and I care, and I use these facilities. So, it's not our imagination, but somebody needs to start speaking up really, really, really loudly, so...
I need to point out what meeting they were talking about. The county manager proposed his budget, we had a workshop. Now, at a workshop, just kind of like here, you don't take comments from the audience. They're just there to watch and to hear, and for you to deliberate. And so, I said, "How can you think that was some sort of public hearing? They couldn't even talk." Plus, it was a small room. I mean, it was just our regular, it wasn't at the chambers, it was just a very small room, and there were more than that, that many people there, anyway. But that doesn't, that doesn't take the place of, nor should it, take the place of a public process. So, but I have heard the same thing. I have heard the things that you've been saying here, the commissioners have been saying to me as well, and it's like, "Seriously, we need, we need to have this process." And that's, you know, and I'm going to end with, unless you have more questions, but I'm going to end with the fact that, yeah, respect is more important to me than being liked. That's what my leadership thinks that. And this is about respect. And I know that every single commissioner on my county board cares about their constituent, and cares about Ramsey County. I am not questioning that in any way, shape, or form. But there is a process for hearing people in the community, and that wasn't followed. It was put into a county manager's budget, which I found out about three weeks before it was to come out. I am the commissioner from this district. I am also chair of the budget committee. And that is not the way we should do business. And so, that is my message, and I tried to, and I believe that I did, put it in a very positive way for my colleagues, because respect is the most important thing to me. And I'm going to respect them, and I will respect the decisions that they make, but I will also work to make sure that what is best for Maplewood and the rest of my district is heard.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you. One more comment?
Yeah, and this is more for us, than maybe...
Councilmember Smith has one more comment?
Just one more quick comment. I think, as we're going through this process, you made the point earlier, that Maplewood is the zoning authority for this space. Should this, against the wishes of this council, and I think many residents of Maplewood actually happen, it is currently zoned as agricultural.
Yes.
So, if we did nothing, I'm guessing the county would have a hard time finding someone who wants to start a 30-acre soybean farm in the middle of Maplewood. You know, the redevelopment of that land is predicated on a partnership with the city. And if, if any of the motivation around this is about redeveloping that land, or revenue to the county for redeveloping that land, you better make sure, you know, not you, but, you know, your colleagues better make sure that we're on board. Otherwise, it's going to be, I think, a rather short conversation, and I think you and I are on the same page on this. But, you know, it's, that's not to be underestimated, because it's, it's, part of our comprehensive plan is to have a golf course there.
Yes, and they are very aware of that, and that's one of the reasons that I feel it's so important to have a process, so that you can get your questions answered, we can figure out what is the best way to move forward with this. But I do know that one of the biggest reasons, yes, there's some economic development, but not very much, you look at the acreage there, but that the, the feeling is that we want to be more diverse in what we offer in the park system. So, if this, for example, were to be sold as a golf course, that's perfectly acceptable to the county board, and I don't know how you would react to it, but probably not in a bad way. But, I mean, I want to make sure that all options are explored, from that, to leasing it, to whatever else we may do. Because if you don't want the expense of the golf course, and I get that, because we do have more golf courses than any other county, and they're, they're good golf courses. And so, if we want to change that, okay, well then, if you don't want to have that expense, there are other ways to do that besides closing it.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate your advocacy in coming to make this presentation tonight. And for all of you there, I think we all know what we need to do in this, in terms of making our voices known to the rest of the county board. November is the date, it's November, you don't know the date?
It's the end of November.
Okay. So, you know, it's not a bad idea to make more than one call, and to send more than one email, and also to talk to your neighbors, too, to really let the county board know that we are paying attention, and that we do care about the ponds very much. So, with that, I want to...
One other thing that I forgot to be...
One more thing?
Sorry. That's just generally about the budget, and I really, actually, I've got some information coming that will give those dates, so I'll have those when I, when we get to the council meeting. But we do have two public hearings in our budget process. The first one was during the day, and we have completed that already. The second one is actually going to be in, at the Maplewood Library, at 6:30, and it's November 23rd or 5th.
25th.
25th. And so, the addendum actually is voted on after that.
So, after that meeting, or during...
Not that night. I mean, that's, it's just for us to hear from people, so it's a public hearing. So, that's the time where residents or people come and talk to us about our budget, and we listen, and don't talk, so...
Okay. So, there's another date for everyone?
That's another option to, for people to show up.
An opportunity to speak at the budget meeting, despite the fact that we don't agree that this is the only avenue for us to be able to make presentations?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. City Manager Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to check in with the council on the letter that you have offered to write, supporting Commissioner Reinhardt's addendums to the budget. And I'd like to know if you want me to go ahead and draft something, and can we move it along? it along and have the mayor sign it or do you want to all sign it or how would you like to handle that?
Councilmembers, you know, my preference would be that we all sign it.
Are you back to the next meeting?
Right. Because we think are unified up here in terms of our thoughts on it. So we can simply pass it around, make that a priority, that we get that signed. If you want to send me the draft first and then we can keep this rolling?
Is there any council action that needs to be taken to do that? We can just do that?
So we don't have to do it at a meeting, we can just do it? Okay, that sounds fair. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone. Thank you again, Commissioner Reinhardt. We have one more agenda item. You're certainly welcome to stay. We're going to look at our new website that's going to be coming. And so if you're fascinated by that, stay here. Otherwise, we'll give you a couple of moments if you would like to exit. Thank you. I get a recess for five minutes.
We are reconvening the September 23 Maplewood City Council Workshop. And the next agenda item is a presentation of our webpage update. Mr. Sharon, do you want to take over?
Yeah, not to be a wise guy, but unlike the last process, this one was transparent. We did meet with all of the department heads and some of the people who run our website. As you guys know, as part of our, every four years is part of our contract with Civic Plus, they give us a web update, a web refresher. And one of the things we've been looking at over the past year is how do the people in our community use our site? Which links are they going to? What are the most important things to them? So what we did is a couple of things. One, we looked at analytics overall. Where were people going? We found that the main sites people are going to are the Police Department, Park and Recreation, and DMV. They're the key sites that folks are going to. The second thing we did is met with each of the users in the departments from the Police Department, Park and Recreation, Nature Center, DMV. And we went through all of their pages with them. Page by page, is this information still accurate? Does this information still need to be there? And we kind of tasked them with, let's clean it all up. And we were able to get down from about 1,100 pages all the way to about eight, 900 pages. And we still have two rounds of edits left with the Nature Center and our ENR, Environmental Natural Resources section of the page. We're hoping to get that down. And the reason why it's so important that we get that down to a manageable, more manageable number is we found out most of the people come to our website via Google. Fifty percent of the people who come to our site, Google it and they get there. The other half either get to it via Facebook, social media, or we noticed that when people come to the site, they're looking for search. They just, they don't, they don't spend a lot of time searching around the site. Google has trained people to go right for that search bar and go. So what I'm going to show you tonight is a preliminary outlay of what the new site's going to look like. And we took all of the things into consideration as we designed this site. So this is just, it's just a mock-up that Civic Plus came up with us. As you can see, we didn't want to close off that main screen. We thought featuring that main image was still important. It gives us a chance to really brand and identify our city. So what will happen is this image itself will eventually be a video. We had some drone video taken of some key sites around town. So when you come into our site, this first shot will be sort of a high-end drone shot of several areas. We have the barn, we have City Hall, we have Wakefield, and we also have the Frost English Corridor as well. So every time you click in, you'll see that, a nice drone feature of the city, a high skyline shot. And then when you go click into another part of the site and come back, you'll get a new image here. What we tried to do in this one was highlight the things that we thought were critical down in the, sort of the images you see there at the bottom of the screen. City code, which a lot of people are coming to look for. Employment, we saw, again, was another big thing that people came to look for. Fix it for them, this is like mainly potholes and people wanting to get information about the police. And you see there, public safety, park and rec, nature center, which we knew were high touchpoints in the old one. Because this is not a live demo, it's just a JPEG, that top, that top line you see there where it says Maplewood Government Departments Community, in the real version, that will stay as the top line as you scroll down. But the next thing we found, in the current site, we have that scroll bar where it has three or four different new things that pop up each time. What we found there is folks would say, well, I never saw it or I couldn't see it. And we find out that was kind of, not we found out, we kind of knew. It's luck of the draw. Whenever you land on the page, unless you know to scroll through, or unless you know to click through, if it's not up on the page when you get there, then you have to give it a couple of seconds, they might go away. What this new feature does is it allows us to do those, not just one at a time, but four, five, six highlights. And this, once we get past three highlights, you're able to see those arrows and scroll through. So we could feature things like news and events, we could feature articles from the latest edition of Living, and we could also feature council, council agendas and items there. As you see, the other big thing that people talked about when we surveyed the community, one of the big things this survey from the community said is we want to see calendar of events. Our calendar of events right now is there, but it's clunky. It's not as user-friendly as people would like it. This allows you to scroll through, if you're just looking for a city meeting like this, public safety or outreach community event, council calendar or, I'm sorry, recreation calendar. So those are the key things that people are coming to our city for and they want to know. As we go farther down, we have two iFrames. These iFrames allow us to customize what we put there. One of the two things that Chad Burgo and I talked about putting there, one is there's a lot of good examples of folks who are using Invisio. As you know, Invisio is the system that we use to really make sure that the city is meeting its strategic goals. So in the, in the one, we could put the Invisio dashboard, which will give you, you know, 75,000 potholes filled in the last 10 years. It's a couple of key metrics, you know. And we could kind of walk around and kind of debate what that looks like, but we'll have the key metrics in one. It'll click you right to Invisio so you can see what the progress is on the strategic plan. And the other one could be a variety of things. We have, again, the internal survey metric. It could be a YouTube page that links to our latest videos. We could do, we could link them to other important city news from there. So that's what the main page will look like.
Question?
Sure.
I noticed on the bottom and at the top, you've got select language. I'm really glad to see that. What, tell us about that.
So the select languages, and again, it's on our current site now. Select language is just a Google Translate. It's not, we would, it's going to be labor-intensive and financially-intensive to go through the site and translate it into the five or six different languages that are prevalent in our community manually. What this does is it gives us a better snapshot, and Google will translate it for you into a variety of select languages.
Which is a feature I don't believe we have now, do we?
We do currently have it now.
Do we?
It's right, it's actually in the same exact spot.
Okay.
Now, the difference is, we debated a little bit because we knew the search bar was kind of one of the key things that people wanted, but we also didn't want to junk up the banner on the front. So there's other versions of the template where you could put that banner more front and center, sort of kind of in this area right, right here. But we didn't want to junk that up. So we made it a little more prominent, moved it up to the corner. On our current site, it's way up in the top corner, so it's not as prominent. And then the Google Translate link is there as well. So it's not as prominent.
For as many times as I've been on our website, I haven't ever paid any, I haven't seen the select language. So it's nice to see, and I think that that is a nice feature. Goes along with our inclusivity, that we've got the option that they can translate it.
Gotcha.
Tell us about the gray bar on the left, up and down.
Oh yeah, the gray bar on the left. Now, we could change this however we decide, but essentially that gray bar is the same way. So as you're scrolling up and down, that stays with you. And again, it gives you the key functions, the calendar, the key pieces of news. You could look, staff directory, we saw was a big one. Fortunately for Chief Nadeau, most of the people who go to the police site are clicking almost exclusively on his email. So he must get plenty of emails. And then the email, email notification. One of the things we want to do with this new site is, we know that while Living is, while the Maplewood Living newsletter that goes out every month is a really important tool, we also know that people want to get their information online. One of our biggest issues is when there's a snowstorm, when there are closings, when stuff's happening, and we need to get information out to people right away. We obviously put it on social media, on Facebook, on Twitter, but we don't have a great list of, an exhaustive list of emails of people in our community to get that news out to. So if you're on an email notification list and there is a main road closure, or a water main break somewhere, or it's snowing and we need to cancel everything, we would put you on the notification list and you would get that notification. And then obviously there's the back-to-the-top button. And so that's what the main page will look like, and the, what we tried to do is clean up what our current site looked like overall. And, but also try to give folks the sort of the same stuff that's there. And this is just a sample of what our, one of our interior pages will look like. It's a little simpler, a little cleaner than some of what we have already. We'll be able to have a banner across there. I think part of the issue that we have now with our site that was originally designed, it's a dynamic look. And I think it's, a lot of people think it's just too much. You have sort of a banner across the top that changes, and then a banner across that that's changing as well. It's just a lot for the eye to go to. With this, it's a little simpler, just one screenshot. And we could customize that shot depending on the page. So for park and rec pages, we could have park and rec background. For police pages, we could have law enforcement, public safety background. So that's just, we wanted to, before, we have until sort of mid-October to lock down this design, so we wanted to get in front of you guys to make sure that we're going in the right direction. If there's any red flags or something we're missing and not seeing, we want to flag it now before we lock in the design in October.
Comments, council? Councilmember Smith?
You're shocked, aren't you, that I had something to say? Definite improvement, I think. You know, I think findability has probably been my biggest challenge with our current site. I was just sharing with the city manager that I typically go to Google to search for stuff on our own website because I can't find it through our site. So I will Google like, you know, Maplewood dog ordinance or something like that. And I find it faster by going to Google than to our own site. So it's, I think the search functionality, the back, the backend engine piece of it is really critical to make sure that's effective. One thing I want to raise, I've been hearing more about this lately is, and I'm not, I'm sure you've done some of this work, but around accessibility and to make sure that we've kind of.
Yes. So, yeah, so kind of two things. One is on the search, so while cleaning up the backend is important for the search because it eliminates those things that were popular two, three years ago that aren't popular now, that might come up higher in the search when you search for a similar term. But the other thing about cleaning up a lot of the background is it takes a lot of that older format stuff out so it is more accessible. The other piece with accessibility is we have some software too that's kind of built into the site that identifies stuff that's out of compliance. The other thing that'll help us in the design, and this is going to be kind of key for those users outside of Chad and myself, the other users within the city, you can't go in and manipulate the site to look the way you want it to look. You have, you're kind of stuck with that, not stuck, but you, we, that's why we want to make sure everybody's comfortable with design on the front end. Because when you start, as you probably know from your day job, when you start to go into the code and mess with the code to make it look good on the screen, people who use accessibility readers, they're not reading what's physically on the screen, they're reading the code. So if the code's rigged up, it's not going to make sense for them. So that's the whole key that we found. And Chad Burgo, who's our communications coordinator, for those folks watching in the audience, he sat through a few of the accessibility tutorials that Civic Plus puts on. So he, so we are designing this site with that in mind.
Thank you.
Thanks. So something that a designer, a senior designer taught me a long time ago that I think about a lot in my job is to honor the white space, right? And it takes so much discipline as a, as a designer to not put more stuff on the page, right? But that white space is really important. Think about Google. The reason people initially, go back to the 1990, you know, Google was great because compared to like AltaVista and White Ghosts and all the other search engines at that time, it was a box on a white page. It was super easy, right? So, you know, I think really put, I think you've done it here, but it can creep fast, so be careful. I think my other big gripe about the current site is particularly for meeting video, you know, we're using our live streaming service also for the archive video, and it's terrible. It's, it's, it's slow, it's hard to navigate through, it only works on certain browsers and not other browsers. I'd really love it if for the archive video, we moved to a YouTube platform and just had embedded YouTube there or something else.
And Chad knows way more about the details of this. We're already kind of down that road already. We use Tightrope, the Tightrope server. Right now, our, our, our webcasting is done through CTV.
Right.
Because we have the contract with, or because we have the software with Tightrope, and Mike Foles might want to jump in if I'm way off the rails here, because we have the Tightrope server.
Yeah.
We have the ability to do that archiving in-house. So we can customize a little more. I don't know if it solves the issue of being able to watch it on certain types of browsers.
I know live streaming is more complicated, but for, you know, for the saved archive video, I just feel like there's, there's better players out there. And then I just made a note to make sure we're testing multiple browsers across, because that has been a challenge on certain pages. And then the last thing I have, oh, and then the other thing I have that, just a little bit of my experience, I think as we look at forms, any kind of response forms, the more we can do them in-page versus, versus click to forms and minimizing the fields. We did a form cleanup at my job a couple of years ago. We saw our form completes go up 150% just by moving our forms on-page and cleaning up the fields. Like, little changes there can have huge impacts in the usability of forms. And then finally, I'm assuming you guys are doing SEO work, search engine optimization, content optimization work, that's critical. And, and the science behind that is getting deeper every day. So I definitely push your agency to make sure they're on top of that.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Neblet?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go back to what I would call the very basics.
Okay.
The front page, can you go back to the very first page? Here's what I really like about this. I can see it. I mean, I mean, for real. I mean, it's like, I'm drawn in. And I love those little circles down at that first bar down there. And I can actually see the, the select language too. Because I had to go back and look on the old page, and it's, I thought I had seen it, but I wasn't sure. But I really like that you can actually see it. And I think it has to do with white space and using not so much of the green lettering so much anymore, but actually going to, you know, just plain black is really helpful to the eye. I, it's really pretty. I like it.
Yeah. I think in a lot of ways, we have an original design, and people kind of come along and they want different things on the front page. And when you initially designed it, it wasn't supposed to be that way. So yeah, again, you go in and you start to mess with the code.
Sure.
To get it to fit. So there will be, there will be kind of really, anything new that gets added to the site, and I'm telling you this got, this now, anything new gets added to the site, it's going to be a serious discussion about how it gets added and why it needs to get added.
Cool.
As opposed to so-and-so department head said we have to have it on there.
Sure. Thank you.
I would concur with Councilmember Neblet in terms of visually how pleasing it is and how easy it is to look at. I looked at City Manager Coleman's iPad, and my question for you is, I know depending on what you're looking at this with, what kind of technology, if it's on your phone, it looks different if you look on an iPad. I never, on my iPad, translate is so far off in the corner, it's not there, and it says translate. But City Manager Coleman moved it over, but that's not how it appears on my iPad. And so I, that's really important that we, that people, depending on what they're using to view our website, can actually see it and use it. Can you talk about that? The difference between looking at it on a phone or on a computer?
Yeah, this is, so the term they, the term they use in the industry is called, is a responsive design. And responsive design essentially just means the way it looks on a, on a phone will look a lot different, look a little different. And so some of the things that show up at the top, some of the boxes that show up on the top or side columns, will get pushed down to the bottom. So in our design, Chad and I, we're working with the folks at Civic Plus to make sure that when stuff gets pushed down to the bottom, we know it's going to wind up at the bottom and reprogram it so it winds up, or re, not re, put it in a place where it doesn't wind up down, so that critical information is not down at the bottom. I could, again, give you some stats. About 30% of the people who use our website use it specifically on a phone like this, a device, a phone, not an iPad, but it's just a mobile, a mobile phone. So we know that's important, where 30% of our audience is using it on a small device like this.
I appreciate all of the data that you have taken a look at in terms of preparing this new website. I'm excited. So what is our timeline on it?
So our timeline right now is we're working to do a custom site for public safety. So public safety will have kind of a similar look and feel of this, but they'll have some of their own custom buttons that are more custom to them. We also know that park and rec is a big user, so we'll have a park and rec site for them. We're going to lock this in in early October for this design. We'll continue the design work through November, and we'll start the migration sometime in December. And the goal is to kick this off live sometime early New Year.
Okay. Thank you very much. There are no other lights on. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, we just appreciate the time. And again, we really want to thank the, the department users who were patient with us going through those two-hour, you know, meetings where we were changing stuff and eliminating stuff on the fly was really helpful.
Thank you very much. And with that, councilmembers, we have concluded our agenda. We are adjourned.